Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners' meeting for July 15th, our first in-person meeting in well over a year. Welcome to all that are here in attendance. The first order of businesses, as we customarily do, is observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pitch of the flag.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now entertain public comment. Takers? If not, we'll proceed with the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting as printed.
And now, second motion.
It's removed and seconded that we approved the minutes of our July 1st meeting. Any additions or deletions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move. And then we'll move on to our Treasurer's Report with Sally Nguyen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have received from July 13th and 14th a $259,301.63. Our total cash came to $2,595,599.05. Our expenditures this week were $1,002,805.27. The tax claim is $14,354. So we're counting our balance at $1,559,790.24 in our general fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report, subject to a motion.
I'll second that motion.
It's removed and seconded that we approved Treasurer Nguyen's report. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move. Thank you, Sally.
The actuarial report for the pension fund was released and the annual required contribution is very close to what we had budgeted.
Right, a little short.
A little bit less than budgeted. And that money's set aside, so that's going to be paid shortly.
It's paid yesterday.
Yes, yesterday.
Just so I can mark that, actually, stop in the office, though.
The fund is very healthy.
Eighty-three percent funded as of the actuarial status.
It's one of the good things you could do.
Okay, Bill, we'll move on to the HR report. Good morning, please introduce yourselves and proceed.
Lee Anne Shaich, Human Resources Assistant. Under resignations and terminations, I have Elliot DeSulo, Part-Time Meal Transporter, resignation effective July 28th. Lynn Mitchell, Admin Assistant, resignation effective July 26th. Jennifer Orozco, Telecommunicator, resignation effective July 30th. Jalisa Johnson, General Clerk, Eighth Floater, resignation with the date correction of June 18th. George Bees Jr., Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective July 6th. Carson Keller, Fiscal Assistant, resignation effective July 12th. And Rodolfo Leon, Adult Probation Officer, resignation effective July 14th.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved those transactions. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move.
The leave of absence, I Tia Althouse from M.D. J. DeSena's office is requesting an additional two-week leave of absence effective July 6th with an expected return date of July 19th.
So move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved that LOA. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so move.
Changes in status, transfers, and promotions, I have several motions. Requesting a motion to approve Erin Moir's, Erin Moir, Director and Administrator of Children and Youth Services, recommendation to reclassify a current Accountant One position within the CYS Department at a grade 11 on a nine-unit salary chart to a Fiscal Technician position at a grade 9 on a nine-unit salary chart, effective immediately July 15th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved Director Moir's request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move.
Motion to approve Jamie Wogamute, County Administrator, Chief Clerk, recommendation to add interpreter duties and pay to the Commissioner's Office at the rate of $1,500 annually, $57.69 by weekly, effective July 25th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the interpreter duties for the Commissioner's Office.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second on the floor for approving that request from our Chief Clerk. Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move.
Motion to approve Sheriff Clangler's recommendation to add interpreter duties and pay to the Sheriff's Office at the rate of $1,500 annually, $57.69 by weekly, effective July 25th, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second by Sheriff Clangler's recommendation to approve that for interpreter pay. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move.
Motion to approve the reclassification of the Director of Renova Center position from working 35 hours per week to working 37 and a half hours per week, effective August 8th, 2021.
So move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we increased the hours as requested by the Director of Renova. Any question or comment regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so move.
And motion to approve Treasurer Sally Nguyen's request to have her current employees in the Treasurer's Office and Willinda Spicer in the tax claim work an additional 2.5 hours at straight pay. And non-exempt employees within the Treasurer's Office up to a maximum of five hours per week at overtime pay, effective July 12th through August 16th.
So move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved Treasurer Nguyen's request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move.
Then I have Michelle Curry, promotion from Caseworker One in Children and Youth to Caseworker Two in Children and Youth at the rate of $1,306.23 by weekly, effective July 25th. Zachary Northern, promotion from Caseworker One in Children and Youth to Caseworker Two in Children and Youth at the rate of $1,306.23 by weekly, effective July 25th. Anna Cardona, change of status from Secretary B in the Commissioner's Office to Secretary B/ Interpreter in the Commissioner's Office at the rate of $1,128.72 by weekly, with interpreter pay of $57.69 by weekly, effective July 25th. Terri Walton Smith, promotion from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to General Clerk, Eighth Floater in Domestic Relations at the rate of $1,011.92 by weekly, effective July 26th. Katrina Howler, promotion from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to Customer Service Specialist in Domestic Relations at the rate of $1,032.72 by weekly, effective July 26th. Allison Moir, promotion from Docket Specialist in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of $922.88 by weekly, effective July 26th. Olivia Torotto, promotion from Image Clerk in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of $922.88 by weekly, effective July 26th. Kirsten Holtz, promotion from Docket Specialist in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of $922.88 by weekly, effective July 26th. Janelle Gack, promotion from Residential Service Coordinator in the Renova Center to Director at the Renova Center at the rate of $2,500 by weekly, effective July 25th. And Jean Franco Valdez, change of status from Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office to Full-Time Deputy Sheriff/ Interpreter in the Sheriff's Office at the rate of $1,224.74 by weekly, with the interpreter pay of $57.69 by weekly, effective July 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve the personal transactions as presented.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved those transactions. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so move.
Other transactions, reporter of deeds would like to hire Patricia Billman as a General Clerk C at the rate of $745.36 by weekly, effective July 26th. And the Treasurer's Office would like to hire Shantia Harris at County Clerk C at the rate of $858.49 by weekly, effective July 12th.
Make a motion to approve those two transactions.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved those transactions. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so move.
Moving on to the Salary Board, motion to approve all transactions previously ranked plus the following. Renee Firestone, Property Appraiser at, in the Assessment Office, salary increase at the rate of $1,270.3 by weekly, effective July 25th. George Anthony Jr., Telecommunicator at Department of Emergency Services, incremental increase at the rate of $18.20 an hour, effective July 25th. And the following five Full-Time Correctional Officers at the jails, incremental increase, all at the rate of $17.53 an hour, all effective July 25th. That's Joseph Walsh, Nicholas Rommel, Brian McDaniel, Saniel Maldonado, and Brian Wender.
I'll second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved those Salary Board transactions. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so move. Thank you.
Setting all benefits coordinator. Under Conference Seminar request, under mandated, Erin Moir and Nicole Rula from Children and Youth would like to attend the Order of the Rules about Adoption subsidies online on July 9th, $60 registration fee, six credits mandated by DHS. Erin Moir from Children and Youth would like to attend Cultural Diversity Workshops online on August 4th, $90 registration fee, six credits mandated by DHS. Kim Shaw, Brianna Roberts, Taylor Conyers, Rhonda Shope, Danielle Gray, Janine Mouser, Jody Weber, and Nicole Snyder from MHIP EI would like to attend the 19th Annual Cultural Diversity Conference online on August 4th, $480 registration fee, six credits mandated by DHS. Douglas Grove and Heather Woodman from Probation Services would like to attend Basin Training Academy and State College, August 1st through August 5th. No registration fee, meal reimbursement, 35 credits mandated by PBPP.
Motion. Can you make a motion to approve the conference and seminar request?
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved those mandated conferences. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same signs, so move. Anything else? I just want to say one thing, that, you know, this is a lot of highly detailed and very important work that you guys are doing. And then we have Don Facilio, who does a good job of recording all this for the history of our county. And so, it's a lot of detail, it's tedious to go through, but I appreciate everyone understanding the importance of all that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Should I mention your bar, or?
No, no, no. We'd like to presentation.
Sorry.
That was really good.
It's called chrome.
I'd rather do this in at least my feeling of the importance and the order of that, than why we have such a gathering here this morning. It's to recognize and honor Karen Core, who's leaving us after a very long tenure here, 20 years. And so, I'd like to entertain the proclamation, and then we can get comments. But I think it's important enough to do this first.
All right. Whereas Karen Core began her career with the County of Lebanon Employee as an Accountant Auditor in the Controller's Office on November 30th, 1992. Whereas on April 29th, 1996, Karen was appointed as Fiscal Operations Officer One in Children and Youth Services. And on November 12th, 2001, she was promoted to Fiscal Operations Officer Two. Whereas during her tenure, Karen served the county with devotion and commitment to children and youth services. She performed her duties and responsibilities in a proficient manner. And whereas on July 17th, 2021, Karen will retire from Children and Youth with over 28 years of distinguished service. And now therefore be resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of past Boards of Commissioners, past and present employees, and all our citizens unite to thank Karen for the outstanding service she provided during the many years of the county. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and very best retirement.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
And I'll second the motion with gratitude for your hard work in going through different department areas. And I mean, you're just so flexible and a joy to be around. So thank you for all your, everything you've done for children and youth. Thank you.
Are you?
No, I think those folks that were in the room earlier today begin to realize that the employment at the county is just like employment everywhere else, I think, at least in areas that I know. It's like a revolving door. So folks that come here and stay with us for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, to me, are the real value and the real heart of what happens here in county government. So I want to personally thank you.
Thank you. I want to add, in addition to the correction of the number of years, because I had it in my head that it was 20, but it was closer to 30. So we'll edit the tape after the meeting. I do want to thank you for not, longevity is one thing, but quality and longevity is rarer. And you brought that to the county, so we appreciate you very much. And Karen.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and dedication. I've only worked with this capacity for a short time, but I've been with the agency for longer. You have just been before, front of the fiscal department. And you really put in a lot of hard work, and I really appreciate it. And we'll definitely make you miss you.
Karen, would you like to?
Just thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I've worked with a lot of really wonderful people.
And some of them are behind you.
Yes.
Quite a few of them, yeah.
Anyone else have any comments regarding experiences in the department with Karen? If not, we will move to adopt the proclamation.
We did.
So move.
Oh, well, we both, oh, I think.
You're calling certain other.
She seconded, we did.
Karen, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have adopted it. Thank you, Karen, and good luck and good health.
Thank you.
You want to get a, it's been over a year since we've done this, so we're a little rusty.
You get a picture for the radio.
Want to get the group, or they already disbanded?
They want to get back to work.
They heard there was a camera coming, so.
So what it is, Bill. Yeah, they all want to get back to work. Over here is ours, like, we really are.
Like nomads here. All right, everybody ready? Everybody look up. One, two, three. You good?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful retirement. Have one like mine.
Must have an important meeting after this. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce yourself, and then we'll lead through your packet.
It's large. Well, good morning, and my name is Holly Lahey, and Minister here for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Program. And first, if I could just say, it's how wonderful it is to meet in person today. So thank you for this opportunity, I truly appreciate it. I have two items today to present. The first is a revised operating agreement for our administrative entity to deliver early intervention waiver services. And this would be an operating agreement with OCTO. OCTO stands for the Office of Child Development and Early Learning. And so, the revisions pretty much are a lot of verbiage. They changed some terms, so they have some different terms in them. And then they've added the Medicaid administrative claiming that we're required to do, as well as a new provider monitoring tool. So there's a few different things within the operating agreement. Do you have any questions?
Does anyone want to give more depth than that? That would be helpful.
Should I start? Is OCTO a branch of the state government, local government, or is it?
Yes, it is a state office.
State office.
Yes.
Does the operating agreement have any financial amounts attached to it?
No, these are for waiver services. So, and early intervention services are entitlement services. And what that means is that the waiver services fund for those services, no matter what has been recommended and approved for that child, should, if they meet the eligibility criteria for that service, then the waiver funds through the state pay for those services. So there would be no funds that we would be looking for county assistance with the early intervention waiver services.
Seek a motion to adopt those changes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agreement as presented by the Director.
And I'll second the motion.
It's removed and seconded. Comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so move. Did you have an additional comment on that?
I was just going to say, there is a signature sheet, so.
We actually have.
Okay.
We already did it.
We're all set.
Done, thank you. Okay.
Let's go on again.
The second item is presenting the Lebanon County Human Services Plan. So this is an annual plan that is required by the Department of Human Services. And it requires that we complete and report on how we utilize the Human Services Block Grant Funds that we receive every year. This is a collaborative effort between multiple departments for the Human Services Plan and those that are funded. So it would be collaborative between Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Lebanon County Drinking Alcohol Commission, Lebanon County Community Action Partnership. And then we also have other departments that assist us with writing the plan as we're required to talk about cross-collaboration and how we really utilize and collaborated across the entire county to deliver services and supports to the individuals that we serve. The guidelines from the Department of Human Services were distributed on May 21st. And they give us 60 days to accomplish all of our tasks and submit that document to the Department of Human Services. So we then completed two public hearings. The first was on June 23rd, and the second was on June 30th. And the final document, the draft document that you have before you today, is 84 pages. It is a rather large document. Forty-seven pages are for the mental health program. The Office of Mental Health and Abuse Services has quite a lot of requirements for the mental health program. And then the remaining pages would all be for intellectual disabilities, substance abuse, also the homeless assistance program, and then the Human Services Development Fund.
In simple terms, can you just explain the, because you've entered through the transition from when you're silo-funded to the block grant, how that's benefited some departments that were a little short?
Yes, absolutely. So what this affords is that the funds that are put into the block grant funding stream are really able to be shifted from one department or one program to the other. So over the years that we've been involved in this, we've been able to use some of those, what would typically have been retained earnings or had been given back to the state. We've been able to use that for other programs that were running a deficit and didn't quite have enough for all the services, and of course, that were used. So it's really shifting those monies around to meet all the needs. I will say that not for every department, not all the services and supports that they deliver are through the block grant funding, so it may be a portion of the funds that they receive. But it has been a tremendous assistance to Lebanon County and having that flexibility to really move and shift those funds where they are needed, to really meet all the needs of the individuals that we serve in the county.
Thank you.
And that helps to treat the whole person. And if they have a dual diagnosis in drug and alcohol, mental health, whatever, or ID. And so it can go between the departments as well.
Absolutely. Yes, and it also affords the opportunity that if we should have a surplus of funds, then it allows for the ability to plan for the utilization. So we're able to plan for perhaps starting up a new service or expanding or enhancing something that is already in existence. So it really has been quite a tremendous help. And we really do appreciate being part of the block grants.
Thank you. Seek a motion, or do you have more to explain?
I was just going to ask if there are any questions about the large document.
I will make motion to approve Holly's Human Services Plan. That was presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's removed and seconded that we approved the Lebanon County Human Services Plan for fiscal year 21, '22. Any discussion required? Any questions?
How much is the block grant?
So, let's see, the total would be, that's roughly, how about $6 million? That is part of the block grant funding.
And is this the first year that you're dealing with it in this form? Or is this the second, or what, how long has this been this way?
I was the president of CCAP, and this was my feature program to get through when we lobbied the legislature. So it's been, I think, 2012.
Well, the block grant wouldn't get approved until about, I'm going to guess, four or five years.
Okay, well, that's what we pushed.
Five years. This would be year number five. The first year, you know, we were really just trying to understand what the block grant afforded and how to get our needs met and organize between all the departments. So, so, yeah, yes, it has been five years that we've hired.
In the, sorry, low-tech offerings here.
They say it's illegal, like.
Within the past year, you know, I know that earlier in the year when Coroner, the County Coroner, and others have presented their, you know, the suicide report and all the different things, have you found that you needed to shift more money toward substance abuse? And certainly during the pandemic, where we're now seeing, and there was just a report out today, that overdose deaths skyrocketed nationwide, primarily opioid overdose deaths. I mean, have we seen that locally as well? And where you needed to shift funds to address maybe increased substance abuse?
Not to date. So typically what we do is at the beginning of the fiscal year for the block grant funds, we start with the same allocations that we would typically have for each department. And then as we progress through that fiscal year, then we are meeting every other month to review where we are as far as funding and where the real needs are. So I can tell you that for this. So I can tell you that for this previous fiscal year, 2021, we did not need to shift any additional funding to the Drug and Alcohol Commission for substance use. The allocation was sufficient for all the services and supports that were needed for substance use. I will say, though, that they did have a rather large number of overdose deaths. And I know that that was a very large focus for the Drug and Alcohol Commission.
And that department itself had increases in funding aside from the block grant.
Okay.
The allocations increased from state.
Which acknowledged when you brought up the terms.
Yeah, so I guess to answer the question, it didn't need to come from the block grant because it came from elsewhere. But there's only so much capacity locally too to deliver the services. We can flood with more funding potentially, but we can only deliver so much. That's what we've got capacity for. But no, the block grant did move around for DNA.
Moved in second. Any other discussion, questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same signs, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Danielle, that's her first appearance. Come on up.
Yeah, it's fine.
Sit and wait.
I'm gonna ask everybody over the frame and ask any questions.
Good morning. Please just introduce yourself and then you may proceed with your.
Danielle Emrich, Purchasing Agent. I'm here on behalf of the Riley Bridge Project for the repairs. So we're the bid to the lowest bidder that we have won. We went ahead and posted this in the Lebanon Daily News on June 7th and June 24th. We went ahead and got our bids together. We want to award the bid to Mar Allen Concrete Products at a low bid of $162,175.70. We want to see if I can motion to award and proceed with this. It looks like we had originally planned to start the, to proceed with this on July 26th. We want to see if we can go ahead and do this forward a little bit quicker. They want to have an anticipated completion date by September 24th.
In addition to the Daily News, it was also intended, which is, if you recall, is sort of the way things have gone here for the last couple of years when it's put on the line and the contractors prefer it that way, that respond to it that way. One advantage for us to that is that the design engineers have a chance to look at the submissions before it comes to this. So we would typically have an opening and then go back later for an award, but they get to do that ahead of time, so.
My memory may, well, let's get a motion on the floor first.
I'll make a motion to accept the low bid as presented.
Second.
Okay, make a motion in second. My only question, because my memory may be weak on this, is Mar Allen known to us? Sort of quality of.
They did the Locust Street Bridge on Myers Town a few years ago. And so I think they even did the Red Rock Bridge. Yeah, several projects and they're very good to work with.
Excellent.
This bridge has been closed for close to two years now, I think. All of COVID, so prior to that. And locally, there's mixed, you know, sort of mixed feelings about the bridge. It's a historic bridge. It goes back to the 1800s. It's a double-barrel stone bridge. The capacity for this bridge, hydraulically though, is a little low to today's standards. There would be a new bridge if it were on big clear span. But, you know, at this point, the repairs for $162,000 make more sense than to, you know, spend seven digits on a replacement. And plus, that would be very far down the road to get program. But there are, you know, the neighbors to the bridge, the neighborhood of the bridge, if you call it that, is very, very grateful for the bridge. It's aesthetically very nice.
Where's this bridge located?
Oh, it's, Riley Road is almost at the Berks County line, all the way east.
Jackson Township?
Jackson Township, even the eastern edge of Jackson Township. You can see Berks County from this bridge, you know, on the top of Hockenberry.
And it's Mar Allen, M-A-R Allen?
M-A-R dash A-L-L-E-N.
Where are they at?
So you feel like.
Just curious, okay.
Quite sure or?
But we've used it before.
Oh, yeah.
With success.
Yeah, okay, that's all right, that's all right. Thank you, that's all I have. Okay. No further questions. I'll take a motion. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same signs, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Well done. Yeah, it was even, unfortunately, vandals were even kind of getting to it.
Oh, yeah.
Concrete caps that are on top of the bridge wall.
That's why.
Hello, Robert. Good morning. I don't need any introduction, but for the sake of the. You've gotten what I wanted here.
You're used to those expensive ones, the 911s.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Bob Dad. I am the Director of the Department of Emergency Services. I'm here today because Commissioner Bliss requested that I come up and kind of give a summary of the vaccination site and efforts that we're encountering. So that's what I'm gonna do. The Lebanon County Community Vaccination Center opened on March 17th, with very well-known, March 17th in partnership with CNS Occupational Medicine. The first day that was opened seeing approximately 1,000 patients. From that point on, the vaccination site was open for a minimum of three days a week all the way through until closing. On April 1st, Wellspan began their vaccination operations at the site as well, bringing additional days of operation to the center. Wellspan, me, and the operator, they were at the site all the way through May 9th. And then the center was officially closed on May 27th. That was the final day of operation. That day was all second person. When we first set out to turn on this site, the plan developed with vaccine providers was that this site would probably run for six months or more, or possibly seven days a week, but minimum of five days a week to meet the projected demand that was gonna be there for the next. That was not what the reality turned out to be. We followed the state's vaccination plan, which defined eligibility and finals. And with the opening of each new phase, we expected large waves of those newly eligible people to start registering for appointments. Fortunately, Phase 1B, 1C, and then Phase 2 brought underwhelming demand. I think there were several factors that led to that narrowing demand. Probably the biggest being that Phase 1A expanded on a regular basis. Every week, that plan from the Department of Health changed and brought in additional people in Phase 1A. And I think that a lot of the people that we had at that was out of place and just they wanted to get their, you know, they thought. Another factor was an increase in vaccine supply and vaccine providers, which, you know, very quickly crossed. As the demand went down, the supply was going up. The vaccine providers and locations were, as well, just making a large-scale site like that less necessary. Regardless, the site had a profound effect and filled a very big need, Lebanon County. Approximately 33,000 doses were administered at the location. Several things worth noting about the site, just in general. It was one of the first sites to open in the state. I know Lancaster had opened the previous week. I'm not sure about Phila.
It's quick. I know they had.
Other than that, we were fairly early to this. That was a good thing. During the time the site was open, there were two vaccine providers for me for a good chunk of it, and that gave us two different vaccines that we had both in our own box. That gave people choice. A lot of people wanted a specific vaccine. Welsh Mountain, which is now Union Health, who had been a key partner with us long before the vaccine site had opened, was also planning on coming in and doing part of the site. However, their vaccine supply only became available as the demand limited and just never came to fruition. It's also important to recognize that the fantastic partnership that we had with Union Health prior to the vaccine site being turned on. We worked with them starting in January to get through Phase 1A essential workers. So you helped get workers to, like, work in the UFL systems, but we're still holding on. We also worked with them to, them and Lebanon Transit to send buses to some of the high-density, age-restricted communities and get those people to vaccine location at Walton County's facility to get vaccinated. They were great to work with. I also want to recognize CNS Occupational Medicine. It was kind of an unheard of entity to us until this vaccine site came around. We couldn't have asked for a better partner. They were absolutely fantastic. They were the first one of an army and they brought within the capacity right out of the gate. They were able to handle 1,000 people a day. And by before we parked, they were ready to handle 2,000 people a day, which is huge. You know, they were, they were just great to work with. They constantly asked us what they needed to do to better suit Lebanon County, better serve our needs, and they were light on their feet, able to make it happen if we had to. You know, we had a ton of great work in the site and that's what made it successful. The lease was unactively terminated at the end of June. And it's no secret, about 15 minutes after that lease was terminated, it was bought by Target. So I'm pretty sure that the current members wanted us out of there. The timing worked out well. We didn't have to exercise, you know, 83.
You cleaned it up for them a little bit.
It was cleanly out there. I'll tell you what, the building, there was not a trace of Kmart in there. It was amazing. Couldn't find the walls.
Not that you were looking for one.
No, so many.
Yeah, nothing, nothing. So, yeah, we're all very excited about that. At this point, vaccines are readily available. You can go to vaccines.gov, that is plural, vaccines.gov. You can search by brand, location, availability. It is out there. If you were looking for vaccination at this point, you can get it. I also want to recognize the monumental effort that my entire team put out to make this happen. This was a real short timeline with a real big, and they made it happen. And they made it happen, you know, with the highest standards. I can't thank them enough, specifically the emergency managers led by Deputy Directors Elmer Ellis, planning officers Brianna, Brianna Lurie, and Jason Lyle. You know, they spent every day, their home weekends, long extended days just to make sure that this site operated continuously without a hitch the entire time. We also had assistance from a ton of volunteers and all of them deserve a huge thank you for the time they committed and the diligence. So to wrap this up, I can just give you a couple of statistics as far as where Lebanon County is, the state, the nation, the world. At this point, Lebanon County's, this number does it on Friday, by the way, is at 45.3% fully vaccinated. The state is at 50.9%. Nationally, the average, the current vaccination, fully vaccinated is 48.5%. And worldwide, pretty much interested, is 12.1%. So, nations, so.
What was the nation? I'm sorry.
48.5%.
I was gonna say, since that was Friday, I think it's in Cincinnati, the state's at like 61% fully vaccinated, so it went up a little bit over the weekend, maybe.
Quite possibly, yeah. I notice they do data dumps.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's your headset.
Well, I'm sure all of us feel the same way, but Bob, you and your team, and I know the sheriff was involved. I don't think in Lebanon County, we have to take a backseat to anyone as to how we handle this pandemic. Yes, Lancaster had their site open, but they didn't have any vaccine. So that was kind of a joke to begin with. So congratulations to you and you're recognized in the community as a leader all the time, but especially a leader during these times. And we certainly appreciate your efforts and I don't think we could have done any better. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
The lives that were saved because of your efforts are uncounted. But we know what happened. Without the vaccine and bringing in the group, I think they were from Lancaster County. And then Wellspan and Stephanie and Briasi was fantastic with information. They just communicated so well and worked together like a well-oiled machine. I stopped in numerous times. I saw first aid and safety patrol in addition to sheriff's deputies there. I mean, we had the security. We had Lebanon Transit stopping out front to give people rides back and forth. What else could you ask for? And people were so grateful because there was a lot of stress. Am I going to get the virus before I get the shot? And that was on everyone's mind. Well, maybe not everyone's mind. The majority of people's minds, in my opinion. So here we are, looking at zero to maybe three cases a day, new cases a day for a week. And that means, in my mind, the coronavirus is on the way out unless the variant kicks up. But, you know, keep getting those vaccines, people. If you're not vaccinated yet, you know, honor these fellows that put in, and lady, that put in all the time to get the vast majority vaccinated so that you can feel a little bit safer. But you're only gonna be totally safe if you two get the vaccine.
So it was absolutely a community effort. And there's lots of vaccine providers that were working in parallel with us outside of our facility that year this happened, so.
Yes.
Wellspan had their vaccination site open at the hospital for a long time before this site was opened.
Dr. Nazir was open, taking people in. And then, of course, it went to the pharmacies and grocery stores. And it was just like, wow. We were on it, but now we gotta get the percentage up.
Why we're able to sit here today.
Just want to add, you know, to my colleagues have covered a good part of it. And when we hired you for this position, no one could have foreseen what challenges would be ahead of you. And we are so grateful that you're in this leadership position for Lebanon County. Because in addition, there's a lot of bigger things than I'm aware of. One center that are running parallel. And you've been able to keep a lid on everything and keep it moving forward. And it's an exceptional job that you've done on behalf of the entire county. Everything that you do impacts everyone. They don't realize it until there's a pandemic or there's a large storm or fire, but you're.